Study session from March 11th to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Director Nicole Welchire.
Here.
Vice Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Secretary Arthur Perry.
Here.
Vice President Robert Oden. President Mike Schaefer.
Here, thank you. Public comments, this is the time for anyone in the public to speak on items not on the agenda, but in our purview. Anyone from public com- for public comments seeing none, let's go to.
E, items of study.
Yeah, I don't want to do E.
Okay.
E one yet, can we do?
E one, I like to throw that item in, in request moving that to next month's study session because our speakers, Tony Gomez and Jesse Blakely, aren't here today. Tony's not feeling very well and Jesse had an emergency, family emergency to attend to, so we'll post one up to April.
Let's go ahead and do the code and David, if you're ready. And E two.
Good morning, President Schaefer, members of the board. I'll be representing my report for the month of February. This report summarizes major points for three ordinance enforcement topics covering scavenging, graffiti and trash container enforcement. For the month of February, the code enforcement officer focuses efforts on patrols in various parts of the community. The goal is to identify and deter incidents of scavenging and residential trash carts left within public view. In the month of February, I caught three scavengers. It's gone down. I'm not sure what's going on. Any questions on that so far?
Do you think they're coming the night before?
I think a lot of it is, you know, the night previous or early, early morning. Oh, the ones that I had been encountering, you know, had bagfuls, you know, first thing in the morning. So that, that was an indicator to me that, you know, they're working graveyard.
Cold in the morning to get out and scavenge, probably.
Well, then, you know, I think it's a little, you know, less, you know, people out and so no one's bothering them. To trash container enforcement, in the month of February, I wrote 185 violation notices with the streets listed and how many violation notices on that street. Any questions on that?
Do you have people that are continually being violated with getting violations?
Some, sometimes we'll have an habitual offender, you know, after the notice process, they'll, you know, do the right thing for a little while and then go back to their old ways. But most of the time, most people are, you know, conforming to the ordinance.
Interesting. I saw, I don't know where I saw it, but I saw an advertisement for a company that will come out and spray paint your address on your trash containers.
That would be very helpful. I mean, I'm not sure.
There are some people.
We don't allow that though, right?
You don't care?
It's like, you know, Sharpie, a white Sharpie, and one picture on it, we got no problem with that.
I know, so we know.
We deliver recycling carts so that they can exactly put size which of what residents, they use like a white type of chalk crayon and those numbers are, I still see that driving the community.
Yeah, you know, in College Park, some of the kids go around and they collect some money for if you want to have it. That's how I got mine done.
Nice. I mean, you know, smart. We have some, you know, enthusiastic people out there that, you know, find.
Take a good retirement job for me.
Um, can I ask, oh, it seems like there's the most violations on Santa Ana Avenue. Is that because of the bike lane issue or what's going on there?
There, there was a nonprofit that came in and spoke to Scott and gave us some streets to, to watch out for. Santa Ana was one of those. So I did some increased patrols and make sure they're, they're putting them away because bike lane issues right by the school. So, but those people have been conforming. I mean, they, they kind of have gotten it. I, I not only hung tags, but I tried to explain the reasoning. So people get, you know, why, why we're out there doing what we do.
You know, most of these violations on Santa Ana are for, well, they're probably not for multi-family properties. They're probably for single family properties, yeah.
It varies. So, you know, you have a lot of these new communities where there's, you know, six or eight houses and I'm seeing it's the, the very.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Like Director Oden is right. Anyways, yeah, I think a lot of those ones are just, you know, not wanting to drag their carts all the way back. And unfortunately, those situations, the trash hauler can't get into those little communities. So there's no other choice for him to.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think especially on the east side, you guys have got those little condo complexes that they're multi-family that have like quiet bay lane.
Sure. Detached condos and.
Yeah, yeah. So that's gotta be.
And also condos that are like rentals or.
Right.
Hey Bobby?
That'll end the trash container enforcement. I had no cases of graffiti in the month of February.
Okay, thank you.
That will do it for the end of my report.
Questions for David?
That's good.
Always thanks. Thank you.
We postponed this one. We postponed this.
So at this point, Director Oden is going to, Vice President, not David, is going to, and we are going to adjourn the closed session at this point. We adjourn for performance, performance evaluation government code. Five oh eight five four nine five seven, performance evaluation for the general manager.
Five four nine five seven.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's the section mark. Confusing, looks like an eight.
Yeah. When you don't bring your glasses, you're subject to scrutiny.
I was headed over to your house and get your glass.
Is that why you were late? I appreciate it. Now, let's go ahead and.
And Mr., were we going to a conference with labor negotiators right after that or are we gonna make another announcement? If we could do both, then we can have Scott in for the first one and then he can be excused and we can have the second one.
I, I think that's.
Thank you, Mr. President.
That's okay. So back in session from our closed session, there is no reportable action on the performance. All right, let's move to item. Three.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Coast Mays and San Antonio District and all the cities and other special districts like Midway City San Antonio District, we have an agreement with the county called the Waste Disposal Agreement. And this agreement allows us to dispose our trash at the landfills. It also allows us to share some of the importation revenues with the county. And it's, the county sets a tipping fee for disposing our trash, which is, that tipping fee is based a lot on CRNR's rate to us and what, and what we charge our residents. That, that WDA is expiring in, in this fiscal year. And so the county officials have, have drafted a, a new agreement. It's called the Waste Infrastructure System Enhancement Agreement. And the reason why they call it that is, is two phases. One, they're, they're anticipating the closure of the Brea Linda landfill in Brea. It's gonna be closing in about three years. So that means there's only two landfills left in Orange County, one in Irvine and the other one in San Capistrano. So the, the county wants to make sure that, one, the landfill's at least reached its life expectancy, if not surpassed the life expectancy. And also, the second part of it is to offer an organic recycling program where cities could participate and, and special districts could participate in that program and help comply with AB, SB 1383. In the staff report, you'll see that there are several phases that the county was planning on doing for the organic recycling program. The first phase was, was composting. And then there would be some buyback. The, the cities special is required to buy back the, the compass as part of the procurement requirement, SB 1383. Phase two would be a co-dig, co-digestion system. And I believe that'd be cooperation with OC's sanitation district to use their digesters to divert food waste. And then the third phase was actually constructing an AD facility similar to what CRNR has at, out in Paris. So that, that was their plan. And they, and then they proposed their, that agreement with all the cities and special districts. And then they indicated that the gate fee or the tip fee is gonna double, basically. It's gonna go from $42.65 a ton to $82 a ton this first year. And then within this agreement would be a 10-year agreement. By the 10th year, it'd be like $107 a ton. And, and that, that tonnage includes the organic waste and trash. So in other words, as you know, we don't take our green waste to the county landfill. We take it to CRNR's AD facility. However, we'd still be charged at $82 a ton. And so a lot of the cities and special districts already have existing agreements to dispose our green waste. So we're telling the county, there was really no need for us to pay that much because we already have agreements set aside. So we have met the, the Orange County city managers associations, created a, a subcommittee to continue to have those discussions with the county. Myself, as a part of that committee, we had a real good meeting last month and we really made it clear to the county that they really should have separate rates, one for organics and one for trash. And, and I made it very clear that we will not participate in organics program. We're committed to the AD facility at CRNR. We highly recommend that you come up with a, a trash tipping fee. And also, everyone agreed that they need to extend the, the WDA for at least another year. Because whatever kind of tipping fees they proposing to pass on to the cities would require Prop 218 hearing, require us to educate the public, that takes time, right? We can't get that done by. Or to, to the county. And they're, and they, I think we're receptive to that, to at least extending the agreement for six months, possibly another year. And then also, they were open to establishing a, a second rate for trash and, and green waste. And what we're hearing is that their proposed trash rate's like 70, $70 a ton. So it's still substantially higher than what it is right now. And, and the community has made it very clear that's too high. And so they're, they're meeting today, in fact, the meeting as we speak right now, my whole, I, I told, I was told that the county was, was meeting with the, with the county officials. But now I'm, I'm, I'm told that the county official won't be there. So we'll, I'll have to wait. I'll find out more information later, later today. But those, those discussions are continuing. I, I've asked Julie from CRNR to possibly look at taking our trash out of the system, you know, talking to Riverside County and San Bernardino County. If we're at impasse, we'll have to wait and see how that plays out. But negotiations continuing. I just want to kind of give you an update where we stand right now. I, I made it very clear that we do not accept the agreement the way it is right now. We, we do not want to participate in the green waste. There should be a separate solid waste rate that has to be reasonable. And we'll go from there. I do know that the county staff is presenting, are giving an update on the Wise Agreement to the Orange County Waste Management Commission, which is meeting this Thursday in Santa Ana. So I'll be attending that to see what, what they say to their commissioners there and what kind of response the commission receive, is gonna receive and, and indicate to, to county staff. But just want to kind of give you an update. That's the latest on the Wise Agreement. I'll continue to give you updates as more information trickles in. And eventually I'll need some direction from the board on what do you want to do? Do you want to sign agreement with Wise? Do you want to take our trash outside the, the system? There'll be some decisions you'll have to make here and within the next 12 months, I'm saying, so.
Have you talked already with CRNR about, about possibility of them taking it to a different location?
Yes, we've, we've been in discussion with that, yes. The, the hall has kind of been out, left in the dark on this. And so they're relying on us to provide the information to them, which we are. We're giving that information, so.
Could I ask Julie to step up and?
Well, is it legal to take it out of the county?
Once the contract expires, yeah.
Good morning. Um, I, I'm here today because I wanted to be here to provide some additional insight from a hauler's perspective. As Scott mentioned, Scott, I will say thank you to the district. He was the very first one that provided us a copy of the proposed Wise Agreements. It's been disappointing. We have a hauler's meeting outside of a county meeting where we get together and talk about how this has impacted us. And myself, representing CRNR, Waste Management Republic, Valley Vista, Universal Waste, the county has not had any meetings with us to talk about the impacts or how this would impact the haulers in addition. So as Scott mentioned, just some background, I think our opinion with what everything Scott presented of this vision of the county wanting to provide, provide a regional solution for organics after the Senate Bill 1383 passed is a day late and a dollar short. If those options had been presented before Assembly Bill 1383 went into effect, January 1st of 2022, I think that could have been a solution. But all of the haulers in the industry had to find a solution of where we were gonna take co-collected yard waste and food scraps and be ready by 2022. CRNR invested $100 million in our anaerobic digestion facility. The other haulers invested millions of dollars in infrastructure for compost facilities. And so for the county to come to us in 2025 saying, hey, we have a regional solution, all the cities are compliant. They already have somewhere to take their materials. So not only from a constituent perspective, and I'll share a little bit as far as potential impact to rates, haulers, you know, had a, an investment with a commitment to their cities of a lot of money to find this solution. And so with that being said, I think the other thing that's a little disturbing, that I don't feel is being very transparent, communicated to our cities and our districts, is the impact of the rate. The county is focusing on just their rate component. So originally, they said 82, now on the table is 70. So let me just go at the $82 rate. The $82 rate, on average for residential, just at $82, would increase residential rates over $4 per home, per month. That's with no franchise fee or administrative fee. So there are several jurisdictions that we serve that have a 5 or 10% franchise fee. Now you have that fee on top of that. But the other component is the residual, which is the trash that ends up in our recycling processing, in our organics processing. Those components are also built into our rates. Residential, speaking specifically to the district, we only provide the residential service under our contract with the district. But we do have an extra cart rate for trash. Those rates would have to be adjusted to include this increase. Our biggest fear with this increase in disposal is that, you know, any customer we service, any city we serve, residents are gonna say, well, I'm not gonna pay that, that much for my extra trash. Well, where do you think that extra trash is gonna go? They're gonna put it in their recycling cart or their organics cart and that residual, that trash that is down there is gonna go up and therefore, so that, that cost is still gonna be shifted, but now we're gonna see it on the other side. So when the county's presenting it, I get it. They're only looking at it from their lens, but they're not looking at it big picture and how it impacts the bottom line that goes to the customer and what the rate payer ends up paying. So I think the other concern is, so we did have a hauler's meeting yesterday with the county. Chris Makin, who's the city manager of Laguna Woods, is leading the subcommittee. He was present on the call. And they shared with us yesterday that on the table is this separate agreement, but the county is now stating that it costs a lot more money to bury trash and that they've been subsidizing some of that cost over the years, not passing that increase on. And that's the justification of needing to go to $82. However, they're now considering maybe a tiered rate increase, maybe $70. But what we heard yesterday was $70 effective July 1st of this year. They said that they get that all the cities have to do a 218, as Scott mentioned, and that they're trying to get on a fast track to get this approved because they also have to take it to the Board of Supervisors to approve any increases in disposal rates. The majority of our agreements, similar to the district, we have to provide our annual adjustment letter for a rate adjustment by April 1st. So, you know, part of me says, do we propose it at what we think might be the $70 rate? But here's the other unique thing with this happening. Our agreement today doesn't allow for a disposal pass through. Our agreement's CPI only. So I would have to come to the district and ask for an extraordinary increase. Or knowing that now this is what's transpiring, as Scott mentioned, they've already said over the next 10 years, they're gonna have a stair step disposal increase. Maybe my request to the, to the district, to the board and to Scott is, maybe we need to amend the agreement and say that disposal's a pass through so we don't have to do this every single year, which would also prompt a 218, that disposal would be a pass through in the rate structure. Because today, the way it is, the way our language is written, it's only CPI. And obviously, even if it goes to $70, the CPI right today, and you'll be getting my, my letters already being prepped for you, Scott, is 3.48%. I mean, we're talking about, you know, still over 50% increase, which would not be covered in the existing language of my agreement. So, and again, this isn't just with the districts, with several contracts that we have. Some are disposal pass through plus CPI and some are just CPI. So my existing language doesn't even technically allow me to get compensated for what I'm gonna pay when our scale, our trucks go across the scales for your, for your waste. So it's, it's a mess. I wish that they would delay that increase in July. But if they don't, we've kind of had to go through this before when counties have been delayed in telling us what their disposal increase would be. And we just have to do a retroactive increase for all of our cities, which is not a good thing either, because there's no way to us to back into that 45-day window that we need for the 218. So we're really, we're pushing it as it is to even get to that 218 hearing for all cities. So it's, it's going to be a challenge.
I think the word mess is probably the more appropriate term to use instead of challenge.
You mentioned April 1st. Are you gonna be, send us with a letter by April 1st?
So we'll do it no matter what. And we'll do it based on the existing language and maybe write something in there about, you know, wanting further discussions to talk about that. But I am starting to sit down with cities and, and that was one of the reasons I wanted to come here today. And Scott and I, we haven't even talked about this yet. So as, as, we were gonna put the brakes on this for a little bit when we heard, oh, okay, it looks like they're gonna do the two separate agreements. Because we also do not have, besides the district, we do not have any city that wants to back out of CRNR's current organic solutions. Everyone that's still in the AD wants to stay in the AD. Our other cities, we take to our compost facility in Yuma, Arizona. No one, even those cities have not expressed wanting to go to the county. And anyway, with that being said, we decided to go ahead and list all of our cities in Orange County and do a little chart that says flow control, yes or no, disposal pass through, yes or no, extraordinary language, yes or no. So we had an idea. And I've got about six contracts in South Orange County that do not have a disposal pass through. They were amended over the years just to say CPI only on the total, total rates, which would not cover this kind of an increase.
All of this from the county and kind of directed at both of you, is this a reaction to 1383, all of it?
That's what we're hearing. We thought it might have been something different. There is a budget deficit that they shared, that in three years, the county's solid waste fund would be negative. And the statement we heard yesterday basically says, it's costing us a lot more than what our current gate rate is what we're charging. And we've been subsidizing that from our, from our solid waste fund. And now they're a point where they have to increase it.
How long do they think they've been subsidizing that?
They didn't state that.
I've read through this a couple of times. And the overview part terms of the proposed Wise Agreement. Maybe it's just me, but this take back and payout, I, I don't get it. Is that just organics that they're talking about for that?
Well, if you were to take your, if a city, let's just say I'll use the city of Laguna Beach or Newport Beach, I'll use Newport Beach. Newport Beach today, they decided they didn't want to go to the digester. So we take their compost to Arizona. If the city says, hey, you know, we think we want to maybe keep it in county and we want to bring our compost to the county instead, it's still $82 a ton, but they'll give them a 60% discount, which takes them kind of right back to that $42 a ton. But here's the difference. As part of SB 1383, there's a procurement that every city has to meet a procurement target. And they meet that through RNG credits from our fuel or from taking compost back. The city, the county is going to require whatever you bring in, you have to take 60% back whether you need it or not, or we'll cut you off at the gate. What are these cities gonna do with all that compost?
They take it back. They're gonna have compost giveaways every day.
Or they're gonna have to, actually, they'll have to sell it to farmers. That's really the reality of it. No one, when we do compost giveaways, we barely give away, we give away a lot, but it's barely a ton or two. There's some cities that have 3,000 tons of compost that they have to find a home for to meet their procurement target. And the county's gonna mandate it and say, you have to take it back. And if for some reason they don't come and pick up their compost and take it somewhere, they will cut us off at the gate and not allow them to bring any more material in.
Do you guys think you have an advantage with the AD that this take back thing's not gonna be rela, that relevant?
Well, I think the way we have it today, we're not forcing any of our cities. It's up to the city to determine what they want to do. And quite frankly, a lot of cities are saying, hey, I'm gonna wait till I get the knock on the door from CalRecycle that says, you're not meeting your target. Let's, they're doing the wait and see. Because right now, the cities don't have anywhere to take this target. And they're not in the market of having people on staff that find homes and sell compost to farmers. So we're looking at providing a solution to some of our cities when it comes to that, that, that we have some farmers that we use. Agrumen is doing that right now for a lot of cities. They've been in the compost business forever. We're, we're friends of theirs. And so they're offering that to some cities. But I think those are those little things that the cities aren't completely understanding the ramifications of what that means. 3,000 tons of compost, that's for the city of Orange, actually. Your, Scott's hometown. City of Orange has to find a home for 3,000 tons. That's on top of the, the RNG credit we give them for going to the anaerobic digester, because they can claim renewable natural gas as a procurement target, but it's only so much.
Out in the wildfire areas and that'll knock all the wildfires. Couple of quick questions and I'll, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
When it comes to 1383 imposed fines, is the county susceptible to being fined as well as the cities? Or I, I've always assumed the fines are only to the cities.
They only would be for their, they do have a, they have some solid waste collection contracts. So the unincorporated area, that's the only area they would be similar to a city is, there's three haulers that have their quadrants into zones and.
It's negligible.
Exactly.
LaFco's been working on that.
It's very small.
My last question for now is Scott's proposal about taking it out of the county and going to Riverside or LA or San, whatever. Do you guys have, have you looked at that?
We have. And so Scott and I talked while you were in closed session. We've already talked about this before. So I sent an email while we were here. There's two things we need to know. So Riverside County disposal rates are just under $60. They're much higher than Orange County has always been. So they're just under $60 in Riverside and San Bernardino's at 67 a ton. So San Bernardino's kind of bordering that $70. So the question I asked for my, my counterpart who works out this, our Paris yard, is to ask him, are you hearing any chatter? My concern is, what I share with Scott is, is they might see this as a revenue generation source to say, hey, well, maybe we should follow suit with what Orange County's doing and increase our disposal rate so we can say that's what the market is. I don't know. That's a thought. But secondly, they do have importation limits. So I asked him also, what are the importation limits? How close are they to capacity? Just to make sure that's even an option. I don't know where they're at. The closest landfill that we would take it to is El Sobrante landfill, which is right off to Mescllo Canyon in Corona, right before you get to Lake Elster off the 15 freeway. That would be the closest.
The next one would be, the one off of Desert Hot Springs, up by Desert Hot Springs.
No, there's one, no, there's two. There's two in Riverside area. Those are further. So there's one in Hemet. It's off of Lamb's Canyon and the 10 freeway. And there's one off the 60 freeway in Badlands in Reno Valley.
Oh, okay. I wasn't aware of that. So Riverside charges $62 a ton.
I think it's 59. It's just under 60.
Okay. But compare it to Orange County. How in the world is Orange County not kept up? Are we that, has it been that much cheaper to go to our landfills in Orange County? Or why aren't, why?
I, I think for, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, I think you gotta go way back in the time when the county was in the bankruptcy phase.
Citron.
They imported a lot of trash from San Diego. And that's where, how they were able to keep that rate down. I remember working down in San Diego. It was huge controversy. I mean, it was 10 cities that were taking their trash up to Orange County. And that's what really bailed them out of the bankruptcy and helped keep rates down.
30 years ago.
No, no, it ended in 2015.
But I mean, the original bankruptcy, I was on this board when the original bank, when Susan, the gal that we had is, anyway.
I really, I do believe importations helped keep the rates down. They, they really relied on importation.
It's dramatic. I mean, that's $20 a ton. That's dramatic, as far as I'm concerned. The county's trying to stick it to all of us now, I'm sure this is picking it up, and I don't really care, but the county's now trying to stick it to all of us for their lack of foresight. And what, I can swallow an increase, a minimal increase, you know, but double it, I mean, that's just not.
That's what we're telling, we can work with it on an increase, but it just has to be reasonable.
Reasonable, I agree. I get it, I mean.
Scott's point with this subcommittee, the city manager may band together and say, sorry, we're not signing. So then what are they going to do? Right, they have to sign it. They have to sign it, and they have to go to the board. So what's good about this meeting, and we'll all be present from our office, that boardroom will be packed on Thursday, the haulers will be there, the cities will be there. It'll be interesting, though, this will be the first time that I'm aware of. So the Waste Commission has appointed people from different variety of cities, council members, that sit on the Waste Commission, including some county, two county supervisors. So I think this is the very first time that I'm aware of, that they'll hear this for the first time. But I don't know the level of detail are they going to go into, unless some of those folks ask the questions, well, what's the impact to the rate? What's the impact to the constituent? Because obviously, it's your constituents, it's other cities' constituents, it's the county supervisor's constituents. They're all voters.
I'm just going to say, are the county people, the two supervisors familiar with what the heck's going on?
We don't know. I know a lot of the cities have reached out to Katrina Foley and some of the other, as I mentioned, I was with Midway City last week, and they've, the board members have contacted their supervisor and expressed their concern. So I think if they weren't aware, they've started asking questions. I just don't know, they, as I mentioned early on, it's, but it's not, for better words, it's not a fully loaded picture of fully loaded rate. The county's only giving their side, they're not giving what is impacted with the haulers and the rates and the structures within their current agreement. So it's, you can easily say, oh, it's only four dollars. Shoot, we know that a dollar is a lot for folks to get an increase, you know, per month. Four dollars, and it's more than that. We really think the reality, if they were to go to eighty-two dollars on the total rate, is really closer to six to seven dollars per home per month.
And it puts a dagger a little bit into tiered rating, and I know we've talked about that, that if this kind of increase goes through, tiered rating's not going to be a viable option.
We don't, we'll do a step.
We all know, I get it, but.
In twenty fifteen, the Citron debacle with the one point four million billion got paid off because the Orange County landfills took in extra waste. I don't know whether they didn't do it after that, but, you know, total mismanagement, if they're underfunded. The Orange County Sand District and the county are actively negotiating and have been for about a year and a half on organics disposal. Orange County Sand District will not accept organic waste, liquid organic waste into their digesters until the county builds a facility to prepare it to easily be put in the digesters. And I did research, my staff did research way back when, that organic waste, the liquid organic, liquefied organic waste will produce a massive amount of gas. The county is a big holdup. They are struggling to figure out how to pay for that facility that'll take that material and liquefy it and put it in the digesters. And this is maybe part of a program to pay that off. I can't imagine what a mess they've created for themselves. And where are the supervisors on this issue? I know you said people have been talking to them. I think Katrina would be one that would listen. Their chair is ill. He may not be there by the time this is concluded. I don't know where Chapie sits, he's a Democrat, he votes with the Republicans.
What action do you need from us?
Yeah, I think it's just information.
I guess I'd like to see, no, I guess I'd like to see a little more about whether we stick with Orange County and go to, I'd like to see some more numbers on that.
Yeah, absolutely.
We need to talk about this change of the contract, I mean, are you going to make that proposal to us?
I can send a formal email to Scott requesting a meeting to discuss and maybe highlight some of these things.
Send up a Solx ad, can we have a discussion?
Now, changing the contract is dependent on all this getting passed. If they, if there's a revolution and nothing changes, we still, I still want to talk about it.
I think we should, because I think that no matter what, based on what we're hearing, they're going to want some sort of a disposal adjustment, which is going to be higher than CPI either way. And so maybe that's just, we make that change. And now that we have the three cart system, it's very easy to set that language in the adjustment that says the service component of the rate, which is the occupancy rate, and the recycling, you know, and organics, those can be, you know, CPI, but the disposal, I think, needs to be listed separately as a pass through. And we didn't have that set that way before, but I think now it makes sense.
And your meeting is Wednesday?
The commission's meeting is this Thursday, yes.
Well, truly, there's two parts to the organic process. It's the green waste and the liquid waste. Have you heard anything about this funding going towards gathering organics, which each of the cities in the county would benefit from in thirteen eighty-three? Get that off the street and not have to pass it through the sewage treatment plants? Is, has there been any discussion, the green waste has probably been the big discussion. Has there been any discussion about the organics processing facility that Orange County Sand District wants the county to provide prior to Orange County taking in liquefied organically? Well, that's a subpart of, I think, this discussion. I know they've been, I know Orange County and the county have been talking about this, and I think there's a third party, and I forget who it is. I'm done, I don't know what to say.
Scott, is the city of Costa Mesa aware of what's happening? Because with their commercial, that's going to be a big effect on the commercial.
There are some cities that are really aware, and there are others that are just maybe sending a staff person. I even have a call later today with the city of Laguna Beach to talk about the options. Right now, they go to our compost in Yuma, so they just want to understand, so we'll share with them. You know, even if they were to shift it, the one thing that, when it comes to the compost, is that same, another example of what's not really being very transparent on the county side, as they mentioned, the eighty-two dollars a ton, but we'll lower the rate sixty percent, but you have to take back the material. Well, that eighty-two dollars a ton, let's just say, taking it back to the forty-two is what it comes out to. We can't drive our trucks directly to the greenery off the route. We still have to bring it back, and we have to process that material, we have to chip and grind it. So that roughly is about sixteen dollars a ton on top of the forty-two, but they're not sharing that. So that's where we come in with our cities to say, okay, yes, that's what they're telling you, but here's the cost that you're already paying today. So yes, there'll be a little savings versus transferring it to Yuma instead of transferring it to the county, but we still have to bring it back to our facilities and chip and grind the material before we transfer it back out to either Prima or to Irvine, to Bowerman. So there's just a lot of little things that are still not being mentioned.
Do we have a representative on the OC Waste Management Commission?
No, representative meaning from Costa Mesa?
Yes.
No.
The law requires each entity to have a representative.
Well, there's a representative, I think, for the, I think they break it up into districts, and there is one that represents, but it's not, it's not a city, that rep is not from the city of Costa Mesa, it might be from Gard Grove.
The law requires either the city of Costa Mesa or the sanitary district to have a representative on that commission. I used to be on the commission, and it was attended by a person from the city and/or, or both. But I believe the law requires that we have a staff member and/or the city has a staff member present at those commission meetings. We'd appreciate it if you'd check that out. The city, it was a revolving door at the city, you know, because they're all moving around. But we may have lost.
So, okay, so looking at the agenda right now, they have, on the first district is Ted Bowie, Chair, from the city of Fountain Valley. And then you have a public member. Second district, they have Ariana Barrios, the city of Orange. Third district, they have Janice Lynn from the city of Yorba Linda. Fourth district, they have Christine Merrick from the city of Brea. And the fifth district, they have John Taylor, the city of San Capistrano. And then they have an out large, David Schauer from the city of Stanton. And then they have the city manager rep, and then that's it.
Is this the integrated waste management commission?
Call it Orange County Waste Management Commission. The law might have changed since.
Although that's based on supervisory district. So the Fountain Valley rep is ours.
Is there a difference in the, what's called the Integrated Waste Management Commission from this commission? The law may have changed since I was on it.
Scott, back to my question. So could we notify the city of Costa Mesa what's in front of them? Because they have the bulk of the waste.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
They have eighty-some percent.
Yes, I think that'd be smart, because they might have more political influence, too, that we don't know about.
Right.
Put your crystal ball out for a second, both of you.
How about my magic eight ball? Let me shake it.
The eight ball? You're not old enough.
Yes, I am.
Can you go through it?
Oh, I think so. It's, no, the eighty-two, I don't think, no, the eighty-two.
I think seventy is more than.
I think seventy.
It's a lot.
Still a lot.
And it's rounded up, they said sixty-nine, fifty-six, seventy bucks.
Okay, then we'll wait for more information.
Our meeting yesterday, that they get it, that there's, our time is of the essence, because they need their increase also July first, and they know that they have to take it to the supervisors for approval, and then we all have to do two eighteen's with our cities. So.
They know that it isn't the essence, but they've rugged out for how long?
Yeah, I was going to say. But they never presented the first rate until November of twenty twenty-four. That was the first sticker shock, before they ever mentioned the rate. Yeah.
Well, is our tonnage for the mixed waste cart going down because of the blue cart?
We saw it, we saw it last month. Every month, the recycling is increasing more and more, recycling tonnage. And so that could be also because of, with OCC opening up again, the recycling center, which is fine, as long as it comes out of the mixed waste cart, that's all we care, right? If it's going there, or if it's going in the blue cart, that's a good thing.
Any other questions for staff? Focus out. Thank you, thank you for your participation.
Thanks for coming.
Scott, anything else to add? Let's talk about the Citizens Advisory Committee, what can say?
Yet nobody can give this report.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Our Citizens Advisory Committee is comprised of eleven members, five of which are about to term out at tomorrow's meeting. So on that note, the district would like to thank Sue Lester, Jeff Arbor, Dean Fisher, Cindy Brenneman, and Ben Glassman for serving their past term. The district has received six applications to fill the five vacancies. The applications have been presented to the board for your review, and the board will then make appointments at the March twenty-fourth meeting. So this is just a receiving file.
Did they attend that meeting, or we just look at the information presented and make?
You look at the information, the information's before you today, so you can take a look at it today onward and have a decision ready by March twenty-fourth.
So of these six that have applied, three of them are incumbents, correct?
Of the six that have applied, two, one, two, three, sorry, three, yes. Three are incumbents, three are new.
The incumbents are Sue Lester and Jeff Arbor.
And Cindy Brenneman.
Cindy Brenneman.
Can you, off the top of your head, or do you give back, just give us an attendance on the three that are incumbents?
I can provide that to the board.
Qualified people that are applying, I gotta tell you. Please. Okay, from Massachusetts, maybe he can help negotiate a contract. Anything else?
Is this something that we vote on?
Not today.
At the board meeting.
At the board meeting. Is there any discussion that happens prior to that appointing? Okay, when do we do that?
They can attend.
Okay.
They don't usually.
They usually don't. I mean, if I was wanting to be appointed to something, I think I would want to be there to at least show my face.
Do we do like a closed session to decide who, no? Okay.
Anything else?
Can Sue Lester apply for this position?
Yes, we've made that change.
We have no term limits.
There's no term limits at all.
When we change that, that's what we change.
Yes.
But we, you know, go from there.
All right. So I think that's everything. Any direct comments, anything from, more from staff? Ready for some I N I?
No. Yes, we're getting ready for inflow. Because all of us staff has gone through and sealed up manholes, pickholes, those where in lower areas, and I think they're as ready as they're going to be.
They're talking about rain heavy tomorrow, but I, who knows?
Do we actually have a policy? Or I thought we had a policy that manholes within seven feet of the gutter would be, that's been a practice.
What about Dover Street? That used to be a big problem for us.
Dover? I can't remember how far down our line goes on Dover.
We took care of it, I think, years ago, but I'm just curious. The biggest problem was always Arbor and Wilson and Anaheim and eighteen. And I think the city, when they, remember that, Scott, the city built that big holding tank, or whatever they did.
There was three of them at the library.
Oh, did they?
Yeah.
All right, lollygagging. Anything else from anybody? All right, then we'll adjourn to the board meeting of March twenty-fourth.
Go, Scott.